Oh, thank you.
Well.
I enjoyed it all.
Good to meet you.
Thank you. Martin Gray, Salisbury Elementary. (applause). Cindy Sparks, Saran Elementary. (applause). Don Hudson, South Forsyth Mills School. Tracy Barregni, South Forsyth Mills High School. And if your parents need one of our new administrators, would you please stand and be recognized?
Thank you.
I know we have support.
Yes.
And now, we would like to recognize the 2012 Georgia School of Excellence Big Creek Elementary with a certificate, Principal Sherri Black. And of course, a week ago. (laughter).
I just jumped in at the right time.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Congratulations.
That is all of our recognitions for tonight, but next is our superior spotlight performance, and it is Forsyth Central High School Chamber of Seniors, directed by Lisa Bell. When we finish the performance, they'll have a small break, and you all that would not like to stay here for the rest of the evening, you're welcome to. Forsyth Central, ready?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Bell. I'm a full major at Forsyth Central High School, and we are honored to be here tonight. I have a short video clipping. Last week on 9/11, we got to go out in the community to various schools and places, institutions, and sing a 9/11 tribute. So I'm going to show you part of that. And then I have two of my Chamber of Seniors here to talk to you about their experience.
(coughing).
Hello. My name is Ryan Miller, and I'm Senior at Forsyth Central, and this is Troy.
A Junior at Forsyth Central.
Being able to perform for the 9/11 tribute has really been a blessing for our group. I've been honored to perform it for the past three years.
This is my first.
It is a combination of the Chamber Choir and the Masters Performance Group, which is a musical theater group at our school. And we have been able to go to different schools to perform the tribute. Every year, it's been an assignment for this tribute to talk to, we came up with speeches and picked songs relating to 9/11 and how it affects us. Troy was one of the monologgers during our performance this year, and he talked about how America is our home and how even though this tragedy happened, we were able to build ourselves back up and how that really unites us as a country.
A lot of what 9/11 means to my generation is, has a little bit to do with the tragedy itself. However, it's unfortunate that I can't fully understand it because I was not old enough to comprehend it at the time. However, with the knowledge I've learned from those who do understand it, from those who were, who were witness to the tragedy, I gained a heightened understanding of what it means to be an American, of what it means to serve my people, and what it means to serve my nation. And it gives me pride to be able to do that.
Okay. (applause).
At this time, we'll take a little break if anybody would like to leave, and we understand. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. At this time, we have a consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Kristen and a second from Tom. All in favor? Unanimous approved. Next is public participation, and let me first read our board policy so we understand a little bit about that. The Board welcomes and encourages citizens to attend its meetings to understand the role of the Board and the operation educators here who work with our community and our school and put in a lot of extra time to get that job done. So I will turn it over to Kathy.
Thank you, Dr. Abear.
Good evening, Dr. Evans and Board Members. Thank you for allowing us this time to share with you just some of the things that the counselors at North Forsyth High School are doing. The process of aligning our program to the ASCA model has been a time of professional growth because there has been so much reflection and meticulous examination of our process to see how we provide services that are effective and meaningful to all students. Each year, we've refined our goals and our processes using the data that we've received, using advice from our Advisory Council, and then from feedback that we've received. And we have had this ongoing process of always trying to improve. And this, of course, will go on long after we submit our application in October. This application is just a glimpse of some of our work. As you know, Forsyth County Schools has embraced the ASCA model. As professional school counselors privileged to work at North Forsyth High School, we design and implement a comprehensive school counseling program that promotes student achievement and personal growth. This could not be accomplished without this encouragement and the support of Dr. Abear, Mrs. Phipps, our other administrators, and our faculty. Our program is comprehensive in scope. It is preventive in design and developmental in nature. This effort, this application is our effort to show that our program, although it is a high school, has risen to ramp level, a recognized ASCA model program. Mr. Owens is now going to present some of the details from our application. Thank you.
Thank you. First, we'll give a brief overview of the ASCA national model, and then we'll give some details about how it's being implemented at North Forsyth and the results that we have seen. As represented by the ASCA symbol, there are four key components to the model, with the foundation setting the tone for the program. The foundation is the catalyst for the delivery and management system, which informs the accountability of the program. The accountability gives feedback on the program as a whole, leading to refinement of our practices year after year. We'll give a brief overview of what we have done in each of these areas as we go along. The essential question that needs to be answered by the RAMP application is, how are students different because of what we do? The first component to the foundation is the program focus. This includes our vision, mission, and beliefs, which we have aligned with Forsyth County and North Forsyth High School, along with our program goals, which help guide and define how the mission and vision will be carried out. You can find examples of the vision, mission, and beliefs under the pink tab in your packet. These can promote achievement, attendance, behavior, and/or school safety. Three goals that we've chose to focus on this year were dual enrollment, passing rates for Math II students, and pass rates for retained freshmen, and we'll get into more detail about those later on. Another important piece of the foundation is student and professional competencies. School counselors have standards that need to be met just like classroom teachers and can be related to academic, career, and personal social development. School counselors also abide by ethical standards and competencies developed by ASCA. The next section of the model is the management system, which really helps organize and manage the school counseling program. It includes an annual agreement with the principal, an advisory council that meets twice a year, and includes teachers, administrators, parents, students, and other community members. The management system also includes action plans, lesson plans, and calendars. Also, examples of these are included behind the green tab in your packet. The next section of the model is the delivery system, which is the method of implementation of the school counseling program. The delivery system is divided into two categories, direct student services and indirect student services. Direct student services are in-person interactions with students through the core counseling curriculum, individual student planning, and responsive services, which include small groups. Indirect services include referrals, consultation, and collaboration with other educators. In later slides, I will show examples of how these have been implemented at our school during the previous school year. Accountability. The accountability of the school counseling program uses data to inform program decisions. It helps mold and shape our program year after year for continuous evaluation and improvement. It includes program results reports based on student data analysis. Another consideration when thinking about accountability now is the CCRPI. Instead of the focus being solely on student achievement like in previous accountability measures, CCRPI includes post-high school readiness indicators and exceeding-the-bar indicators that are often directly or indirectly related to school counseling programs. This is something that takes high priority when designing our school counseling initiatives and aligns school counselor work with school improvement. The ASCA national model goes hand-in-hand with school improvement because of its focus on accountability and school-wide goals. So let's talk about the results of our program goals from the previous school year. Our program results consist of core curriculum results report, small group results, and closing the gap. You can locate these under the blue tab in your packet along with some small group lessons. The core curriculum results report was related to increasing dual enrollment by 5%. We chose this goal because we feel that the program was underutilized at our school. It also expands course offerings, is an indicator on the CCRPI. It helps students transition and complete college, and is financially and academically beneficial for students. To increase enrollment, we offered classroom guidance to all freshmen and sophomores, and had individual conferences with interested sophomores and all juniors where dual enrollment, along with many other topics of college and career readiness, were discussed. Other factors that we think helped were the University of North Georgia and Lanier Tech information nights, and the bus transportation for some students that was provided by United Way. Overall, we saw a 34% increase in dual enrollment for the previous school year, which exceeded our expectations. The most growth occurred in the Excel program with an increase of 81%. There's more data to be presented on, in your packets, on what students learn throughout the core curriculum results report, but we feel like we might be hitting the tip of the iceberg with dual enrollment because through our surveys, about half of the freshmen and sophomores haven't expressed an interest in dual enrollment in future years. The growth of this program is something that we want to continue to work on in future years and embed in the culture of our school program. Moving on to our small group results, our small groups were related to the goal of increasing the pass rate for retained freshmen by 42%. We chose this goal because we want students to graduate on time, and we chose an aggressive goal to get them back on grade level. We actually had four different small groups going with three related to this goal. We covered six lessons that focused on academic development and college and career readiness, which are included under the blue tab in your packet also. These students are also involved in a study skills and credit recovery program with a graduation coach. The pass rate for these students increased nine and a half percent, which is positive movement, but not quite where we wanted them to be. Needless to say, the intervention helps inform any small group programs in the future so we can continue to prove them, improve them. Next is our closing the gap report, and it focused on increasing the pass rate for students who failed Math II by 10%. Teachers referred students who were failing after the first nine weeks, and then they were paired with an upper-class peer tutor. They met once per week throughout the rest of the school year, during instructional focus, or before or after school. The reason we focused on this goal was because Math II typically has a higher failure rate. These students also need four math credits to graduate, and they need four math credits for college admissions. And peer tutoring has also shown to be an effective intervention, according to some research. None of the students who participated in the peer tutoring program were passing at the nine-week grading period, but by the end of the period, 53, by the end of the school year, 53% of the students had earned credit in the course. We will continue to monitor the math pass rates as the new core curriculum math classes are introduced to see if one level becomes more of a struggle than another, and we can hopefully close the gap again. That concludes the results reports for the previous school year, and all of this information will help us continue to examine and grow our comprehensive school counseling program and will be a part of our RAMP application. In closing, we appreciate the support of the North Forsyth Administration and faculty for our counseling program and for Forsyth County Schools for their support of the ASCA national model and RAMP. The next step is submission by October 15th, and we will hear about results in the spring. Like Dr. Abear said, only 16 high schools in the state of Georgia have been honored since 2003 due to the nature of high school work. We're hoping to be named a RAMP award winner not only for our department and school and county, but also for our students because it's ultimately beneficial for them too. Whether we receive the award or not, we can say the process has improved our department and school. Thank you for your time.
Extremely impressive. I can't believe you have that 53% improvement and all of that, just exceeded what you had expected and all. But to have a high school do this, you all are so busy, I don't see how you had the time.
Exactly.
It's been doing it in your sleep, my goodness.
Thank you.
It's encouraging. I know the counseling program has that much measures that they take. I didn't realize how calculated out it was, so we look forward to seeing you back here in the spring when you get an award.
Yeah, we sure do.
Let's hope so. Are any of the other 16 in Forsyth County by any chance?
So you've set the bar. You hear that, Josh?
Right.
Well, great. Yes, thank you for your work. That's wonderful.
Next on our agenda is Dan Jones with the finance report.
Okay, we have for you tonight the financial report for the month ended August 31st, 2013. We started the month with $36,567,000. Our receipts for the month were $15,325,000, and our expenses for the month were $25,466,000, leaving us cash in the bank at the end of August of $26,426,000. And this is about $450,000 less than this time last year, and about $10 million less than this time, than last month. So we should rectify the situation.
Two and a half months.
As you see, hopefully, the local property tax will start coming in. We've gotten a little bit, you'll see in the budget comparison. But, you know, it's this time of the year where we're always getting down like this. The budget, you can see that we've only collected about 3.7% of our revenues, and you can see expenditure accounts are running about 17.4%. Advalor tax, we haven't collected enough to even register as a percentage. But again, we expect that to pick up here in the next month. So we're going to need that. But you can scroll through and see that, as usual, again, this time of the year, some areas are higher than others because it started, and they even out as we go through the year. A list of the checks that we wrote for the month, and again, we can get you any information you need. And as you recall, we haven't given you a school report the last couple of months, so tonight we've got June, July, and August. So June, the end of the fiscal year, there was $4.8 million in all the school accounts.
It's less than later.
July, it was down to $4.6 million, and then August, we'll back up to $5,265,000. So I know you haven't really had a chance to look at those, but when you do, if you've got any questions, just let us know. Sales tax, sales tax continues to kind of be a mystery. We collected $2,464,000, which is about 2.4% less than last month, and 4.5% less than this time last year.
I have a client that's in retail, and she, her sales were down for both months.
Well, the trend, I thought it was going better, you can see, but the last three months, we've been less than the previous year.
I think with all the rain, everybody'd be shopping.
Must be going to the outlet mall.
Yeah.
This money is invested, and we earned $603 in interest, and there's 8.4 million left. This will be, used to make bond payments, we've got some payments coming up in December. And just to give you an idea of what this looks like, you can see the downward trend. I don't like to see that, but that's the way it's shaping up right now.
Mr. Jones, how much do we have in December to pay the bond payment?
Hmm.
Roughly, or?
I don't, we'll call it right offhand, I can get you that number.
Okay.
$2,007 bond, there's 7.2 million left there, and we earned $704 in interest. And the '05 bond, there's 3.1 million, and we earned $308 in interest. And again, this is our capital outlay account, and again, this money is going to be encumbered or
Allocated.
For the next elementary school, elementary number 14. And service between sales tax and our checking account, we've got $14,142,000 for bond payments. Any questions? That's the report.
Sarah Neffin, from the sales tax, as well as the, what we have collected from taxes to pay the next payment.
Yeah, we'll be okay with our bond payments. It's probably going to take a good bit of this, but between sales tax and what we have, and property tax is going to start coming in.
That's right.
By the time December gets here. So we'll be okay, we'll be able to make those payments.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next is the State of Georgia Listening Sessions. Dr. Evans?
Yes, you should have received some information from me about the State of Georgia Listening Sessions. There are a couple that you could choose to attend. I think actually only one of them really would work, but if you would like to plan on attending the one that's going to be in Delana, I believe that is on October the 8th, we can ensure that we have those, make contacts as far as that meeting would be concerned, just want to need to know your pleasure about attending that meeting.
I'd like to go. I've got something else that night, but I'd like to go.
Okay.
Maybe check the diary.
If something changes and you could go, that'd be fine, otherwise we'll just let them know that you guys will be going.
I'll probably plan to go as well.
Okay.
Sounds good. And next is action items. Was that any other questions about that? Next are the action items. We only have one. It's the Lanier Tech College Dual Enrollment with Valerie Hall.
I promised the dual enrollment plug earlier was not planned, but I'm glad it was included, because it's going to help us present to you a little bit of information about dual enrollment. We were here last, several months ago, letting you know how the last school year went dual enrollment, so we wanted to get you kind of up to speed of where we are currently with our dual enrollment efforts, and most importantly, tonight, we're going to sign an agreement between Lanier Technical College's president and our superintendent, allowing this to happen again this particular school year. So just as a reminder, dual enrollment is where our students are earning concurrent credit at both the high school and the technical college. There are two types, academic dual enrollment, which are kids at the University of North Georgia and Georgia Perimeter other colleges for Excel, but tonight we're focusing specifically on career-related dual enrollment through the HOPE grant. Our students started either on August 12th or August the night, depending on which programs that they were attending. And as was mentioned earlier, so eloquently in the counselor's report, we are excited about the CNA program, having transportation provided by United Way has been very successful a way and means for a lot of students who otherwise would not have the opportunity to go to campus every morning, so that's working out pretty well. We've worked the logistics out and the kinks out the first few weeks of school to get them there on time and back to school on time. Just so that you have a little bit of information on our enrollment numbers by school, you can see the programs that we have kids currently enrolled in, and again, these have fluctuated a little bit based on campuses and some drop ads and those kinds of things, but that's a little bit more of information about where our students are at. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Fitzpatrick, who's the Dual Enrollment Coordinator for Lanier Tech, to administer the second portion of our presentation.
Thank you, Valerie, and we're honored to be here tonight, and very pleased that you had allowed us to be here tonight. And may I introduce the people with me before we get started, please? I have our President, Dr. Ray Perron. Would you raise your hand, Dr. Perron? And actually, his wife is with him tonight. Ms. Perron, we have, of course, Joanne Tolson. If you'll stand up, Joanne, I know all of you know Joanne. Faces very familiar. And Lynn Jackson, who's on our Board of Directors. We also have Donna Britson, who is our Dean at our Forsyth Campus. And I know Joanne and Donna both have very familiar faces. And I know Joanne and Donna both have very familiar faces within the Forsyth County Schools, and I want to thank them for all the help they give us here. Of course, we have our marketing director, Dave Paris, who's going to be taking a picture in just a moment. So those are the people with me tonight, and thanks for being with us. Dr. Perrin and Dr. Evans, each year, we're required by the Department of Education and the Technical College System of Georgia to actually sign an agreement, and we're here tonight to sign the agreement. In fact, in just a moment, I think you're probably going to ask your board to vote on this agreement before we sign it. But I would, it's, I'm very proud, and it's like Valerie said a moment ago, our numbers, system-wide for us, continue to grow, and Forsyth County continues to play a large part of this. And you certainly, the Board of Education, we appreciate the support you give them, that you're buying the CTA books for them, that bus transportation through United Way. We have many of the counselors, and we certainly could not do it without these counselors. And it's not just one counselor, it's all the counselors. We really appreciate the amount of effort they put into it because they have the interests of the student at heart, and we want each and every one of those students to succeed, and we want to be a part of your team to do this. So if Dr. Evans, if you would ask for this to be, I have the agreement with me, but if you could ask for the agreement to be signed, I will get the agreement out and ask that Dr. Perrin be working his way up front.
Great. We'd like to make a recommendation to the Forsyth County Board of Education that the Lanier Technical College Dual Enrollment Memorandum of Understanding be approved.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
Gladly moved.
Second? We have a motion from Tom and a second from Ann, and we'll have any further discussion or we'll have the signing of it? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimously passed.
If Dr. Perrin and Dr. Evans would sign this agreement now. Dr. Evans, if you notice, I have you signing on the blue tabs, and Dr. Perrin, I have you signing on the red tabs.
They want a picture with the board also.
I would like to add that the relationship that we continue to enjoy with Lanier Tech, quite frankly, I think is at all-time highs, to be honest with you. And I think that our administrators within the system, our counselors within the system, continue to work with a real commitment to giving these opportunities for students. And Dr. Perrin, on behalf of our school system and Board of Education, we want to welcome you to Lanier Tech. This is the first time that you've been with us, but we're excited, and we know that you have already demonstrated your commitment to the support of dual enrollment by, I think, some waiving of some fees or something like that. It wasn't a lot of money, but for some students, $150,000 could have just as well been $15,000. So we greatly appreciate Lanier Tech waiving of that, and I have every expectation that as our kids have success there, we'll see more and more of that. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors for Lanier Technical College and the faculty and staff, we certainly want to thank this board, you, Dr. Evans, and your staff for the great support that you give for dual enrollment. We believe that this is a win-win-win situation, certainly a win for the students who are earning college credit and high school credit concurrently, a win for our college, and certainly a win for the school district as well. And we did waive fees and a portion of tuition that the HOPE scholarship or the HOPE grant did not cover, so hopefully, we're trying to remove barriers that would keep students from doing dual enrollment, because we believe that's strongly in effect. And then, thank you so much.
I had a mother of a student who is at Central who's involved in this program that just absolutely thinks it's the best program ever for a student that wants to go ahead and get ahead of the game, to find, if that's the career they want to go into, you don't waste your college credits that way. She was just ecstatic, and it's, you know, basically pay for hope. It's just a win-win, and I agree with you. We're going to have more and more students doing this when they see the financial value. And if parents ever get clued in...
We were just saying, we'd like to have some of those students come back at the end of the school year and tell us about their experience of going through it, so.
Yeah. Might help our overcrowding a little bit, too.
Okay. Next are our points of information. Dr. Evans?
Okay, thank you, board members. I do have two points of information that I'd like to share. First of all, you have heard a little bit on and off over the last several months about the manufacturing curriculum that has been manufactured in conjunction with Siemens and the many activities that we're now involved with Siemens, and they are a corporation that really has put a lot of money into this process of developing the curriculum, but not just put money into the process, but made available opportunities for students to be involved in internships, and I think what's referred to as a truly European internship-type experience for our students. Anyway, outstanding article that was actually written, but it quotes one person that you will note on page 20, the second page in your article, but it's page 25, but it quotes actually Dr. Hall and talks about the program that we have going on there. So this is, this program really has reached to the point where it's received some national attention, and as the CEO of Siemens was in Atlanta on Monday of this week, and Tuesday, was actually sharing how the program is being such a success in a partnership with them, and it's pretty good because Siemens is a phenomenal international corporation. I am so thrilled also, we didn't get this in the earlier recognitions, but we did get this in your points of information. Krista Low, Krista, would you stand up? You know, we sometimes, we're really, really lucky, but we hired the state's best health occupation teacher and got her down at Lambert, and her husband came along too. And you already met Josh, but Josh is an outstanding administrator that's serving at Forsyth Central High School. But Krista, you already know we have the world's largest DUCO program. Well, within just a few short months, I'm told that Krista will have the world's largest Health Occupation Students for America program. So Krista, she has been recognized as the HOSA Advisor of the Year, and she is a now teacher in Forsyth County Schools. So we welcome both of the Lowes, and Krista, thank you, and Joshua, for being with us tonight.
Congratulations. Any other comments on points of information? If not, do we have a motion to go to an executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Motion from Kristen and a second from Tom. All in favor? Unanimously passed.